...to regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, October 23rd, 2019. Here in the boardroom, let me start with roll call, please, Tammy.
Maria Volkey, here.
Linda Yingling, here.
Nup Dashback, here.
Paul Crew, here.
Brett Waller, Jeremy Ratliff, here.
John Smith.
Kristy Stollenberg, here.
Kevin Blake, here.
All rise as you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Airey Public Schools Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the role our elected board members serve in the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. What we like to do to start our meetings is to entertain any opportunity for our community or public to comment to the board. Just a reminder, while we appreciate your participation in the school board meeting this evening, this public comment period is an important time for the board to hear those concerns of its constituents. Nevertheless, prior to making a statement during the public comment period, you may wish to consider whether the content of your speech could be harmful to an individual person, and if so, whether that person could have a legal claim against you related to the statement you make this evening. We've been advised that the Wisconsin Supreme Court has specifically ruled that there is no absolute obligation to text affirmative comments by speakers at board meetings such as this. Therefore, please be aware that each speaker bears the personal risk that anything here she says during the public comment period of the school board meeting is deformatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. Thank you. Just remember, we do allow about 15 minutes at the beginning of our meeting here on our agenda, and if you do come in a group and turn in your pink form for public comments, that we ask that you assign a spokesperson, and we allow three minutes per topic or per group to address the board. We do have one form that we're handed in tonight, and that will be carrying notes over, and any guests who come up to the table would like to talk about the therapy dog policy. Yes, Karen? All right, welcome, Karen.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Again, I wrote it mostly because I only got three minutes, so I have to get a lot in there. After your discussion on the use of more therapy dogs in MAPS schools, members of the ATD realized that full understanding of creative ideas sometimes takes place over time. In addition, I wish to apologize for not making myself clear enough last month on the following points. ATD teams, one dog, one handler, wish to work with the board on a therapy policy so that all students can take advantage of therapy dog resources, not just a select or an elite view. Two, ATD members know that we must involve school policy first because ATD members must work under the rules of the ATD. Members must work, this maintains our insurance, and by the way, I made a mistake last time trying to say that because I said a thousand, it's a lot more than a thousand, and it's in your book. So, in order for us to maintain our insurance, we have to follow the rules of the ATD. Insurance companies frown on taking shortcuts. Dogs and handlers need rules. Rules come under the jurisdiction of the school board, not the administration. Members of the ATD do not wish to dictate to teachers or staff on how or even if they choose to make use of therapy dogs. We only wish to be partners with the board in making therapy dogs available to all MAPS students. In your booklet here, our budget booklet, district booklet, your mission statement, your vision statement, and your board goals, which I read last time, all have to do with partnerships with the public. We are definitely one of those. So, this is a great opportunity for you, I guess is what I'm trying to say. I have to take a look at this because it was something I wanted to add. I can't, oh, me personally, I cannot be a part of any therapy dog program that does not make use of the ATD rules, by the way, and procedures. Make use of it doesn't mean that you wouldn't add more, you wouldn't change, whatever, but I cannot be a part of it, and a lot of them couldn't because, again, because of the insurance idea, because I want to be in charge of my dog, and a lot of those rules protect me and my dog and my dog. So, members of the ATD do not wish to dictate, and I just said that, on how teachers or staff, they just want to make available to you. As a board, once you are familiar with the fact, you can no longer ignore your responsibility. You must be proactive by having a policy in place. Now, here are some questions that you might, does MAPS need or want more therapy dogs to be available? Jefferson School said yes. The entire school said yes. MAPS reading scores say yes. Try, badly say, let's try. It's free opportunity. I can't tell you how many people that I've talked to have said, this is free. It's something you can try. They come to us for money all the time when they really need money, but they don't, they won't take, they won't try to be creative and have free, use free things that are available. Just something to think about from that being. Student mental health statistics in Lincoln County say, try everything. Really poor, really scary to see. Try, not, try things that are real, not just words. Some kids don't get an opportunity to, when we go to Lincoln Health, those kids don't get to have anybody touch them. You know what, that's hard to live for, yours and yours, without anybody even touching you. And therapy dogs, I just want to, I deliberately stay away from emotional stuff because I know you know all this stuff that's out there on the line, and I didn't want to start with that. But I have to bring some of that in when we're talking about, does MAPS need or want more therapy dogs? One therapy dog for, I don't know how many, what, 3,000 students and staff is not even reasonable. In conclusion, members of the ATD are offering you, MAPS, the board, free help in the form of community partnership, something you value. You've said it in your, all of your mission statements and everything. We hope that this second attempt to explain our position helps your understanding and will lead you to take action to help more MAPS students. The questions that I would be interested in you answering are, do three or four policies that you might have that might cover therapy dogs, do they have rules and procedures? And if so, I would really like to have a copy of them. Because I think just saying, well, we've got these, they're not really therapy dog, it's not really a therapy dog policy, so therefore, what are the rules and the procedures that I would have to follow if I had my dog in there? I know clearly what they are from the ATD. I know clearly. So, I would like to know that, if you do have, if your policies that you're using to cover a therapy dog, if they do have policies and procedures, I would like to have a copy of it. Will the board write a policy that covers therapy dogs as an available resource for teachers and staff? Not something that teachers and staff have to do first, just to be able to tell them, hey, you know what, you need a therapy dog, we've got a contact, you contact them and you can have it, and we've got a policy in place. Merrill really needs to have this too for emergencies. If you call around to different districts, oh my gosh, they're all scattered, they're all working on it right now, they're working on it. Everyone I talked to, I talked to Wassa, I talked to one that an ATD member belonged to, I can't even remember which one it was right now, started with C, and she said, oh gosh, we are busy working on it right now because it's important because of Lincoln County's health, mental health state, because of the statistics that we have right here in this MAPS district. One dog cannot do it. That's not good, that one dog can't. Okay. So, I would like an answer to those two questions if I can. ATD, well, I already covered that, I'm not going to reiterate that. But anyway, I hope I helped you understand where we're coming from, that we are not trying to push it on anybody, that we are not telling teachers they have to use one once a week. No. I can just imagine, I can have on this list too, guidance counselors, I'm sure would say yes, speech and language teachers, I did give you a list on that. They, they get, you have, you have kids in this district, a lot, quite a few kids that have problems, autism, other problems with speech, with language, not necessarily speech. Therapy dog can give them a chance to have something real to talk to and connect to. And if you ever want to seek one in operation, you can, I can arrange to have mine at the library, and you can watch people just interact. It's amazing. I didn't think so myself. Personally, I need a therapy cat to take care of my other cameras and that, in that respect, in therapy respect, I need therapy cats. But, and I was shocked at how many people would come down from the steps in the library and run over to him when I was actually waiting there for another reason. Oh, I needed to touch this, oh, I needed this so bad. When we go up to Lincoln Health, the staff there, they spend as much time, they go to their dog, this is so nice, this is so good. Just because you might not be a person that needs one, understand that there are lots of people out there that really do. So, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Karen. Next on our agenda this evening, we'll go through recognition. I'd like to start off, the board would like to start off by recognizing the Marching Jays for having a very successful season this year. We had some attached information from the Activities Director, John Smith, but I think Ellie and the, John Miller? We could promote John Smith. But nonetheless, I'm sure John Smith was there, and he could share a story or two. But with that being said, if Ellie's here, and anyone representing the Marching Jays could come up, please. Call them on.
Come on, Levi.
Can you please squeeze that one word?
Forward. Here we go. Would you like to share the story of the season and how it kind of unfolded all the way through the state competition?
Sure, and these guys can help me in case I forget anything. So, we went into the season working really, really hard as any team or club or anything would, and we just had a group this year that was fantastic, that really bought in and loved every second and worked as a family with each other, and we just scored really, really well. The most notable ones, I don't think, do we score anything less than third places? I don't think so. Really, really successful. Obviously, most notably, we got a first place at Waukesha South Show, which was incredible against some really tough competition that had beat us in the past. So, it was really nice to show folks that a small community has what it takes, and a smaller band can beat out larger bands. And then, we had State this last Saturday and scored third place, which is huge, so if you're not familiar with it, third place is, like, you want to be in the top three. And then, scoring one of the highest scores we've scored in 10 years and getting in the top three places for the first time in seven years. So, it was pretty incredible. Super proud of everyone.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Congratulations on a great season.
Thank you.
The next group that we'd like to recognize as a board this evening is the staff at the Pine River School for Young Learners for organizing and hosting their color run for our Merrill families and communities. Their commitment to a fun and healthy activity in the outdoors, as well as the energy they bring is truly amazing and worthy of recognition. So, who is all here from Pine River School for Young Learners? There we are.
They're pretty small, but my...
So, as fall comes around, the other thing besides marching band competitions that you can be assured of now, because it's been going on for five years, is that there'll be a color run at Pine River School for our youngest students in the district, and I asked for Mr. Ryan, Ryan Fouts, actually, can we do a quick introduction here? Go ahead, just say your name.
Ryan Fouts, I'm a fire teacher for Pine River School for Young Learners in 4K.
Joan Tabor, Early Childhood Special Education.
Christine Bowley, one of the speech therapists there.
And Laurie Chakolim, one of the teachers there.
And then, we just wanted to share, you guys should have had a handout with pictures and some information about the color run, and we just wanted to share some of the, really quickly, the numbers that we have from the past five years of running such a successful event. So, the total number of donors we had was 62 for the five years, and the amount of money donated was $2,875. The number of, total number of participants through the five years was 567 people. 99 of those were Pine River School for Young Learner families, and 110 free shirts went to our kids, which is a really big deal for them. 600 volunteer hours by staff either before, during, and after helping with everything. And then, there were 27 different community businesses, organizations that helped to donate between businesses and personal people, and it's just been a really successful event, and it wouldn't happen without the community and with the support that we've had. And Joan Tabor has kind of been leading it, so she deserves most of the credit.
Going to say how wonderful of a day that was, but I'm sure it was chilly. We could have had a chili cook-off that day and not known we could have combined events.
Yeah, I know. It was chilly the previous year too, around the same temps, but I think the winds kind of took over in this.
Right.
And the year before, we had 150 runners.
Right. Excellent. Appreciate all the efforts there. Thank you very much. I see that we have both of our student board of education representatives, so I'll turn it over to Levi Black and Bella Troyer for their representative reports on the high school activities.
All right, so the National Honor Society induction was last night. New members attended the ceremony and were officially inducted into the organization. And the ceremony started with speeches from the officers, and they were really great, and Mr. Murray. And then, each new member was introduced and officially added into the Merrill chapter. And at the end, there was food and drinks and hyper-socializing, and it was a really nice ceremony, and it was nice to see some of you there. This year, a DECA chapter was started at Merrill High School. A couple of weeks ago, there was a business workshop where students created their own mini businesses in the span of two hours. Merrill DECA chapter is getting more involved in the community and are working with the Merrill City Chamber of Commerce. So far this year, students have had lots of chances to go on college tours. They've taken trips during school days, TW Madison, La Crosse, Eau Claire, Stevens Point, Green Bay, and Oshkosh. And there are three left at Stevens Point, Wassa, Milwaukee, and NTC. And I just wanted to make a comment about Make a Difference Day is coming up on November 2nd, and the Junior Optimists Club already has a large group of 36 students signed up to go. And students will be assigned lawns and rick as many as they can, and then there will be food and drinks in the middle school cafeteria, and many kids are very, like, pushed to do this because it's a really good chance to help out in the community.
So, on October 10th, for the first time, juniors were able to take the pre-ACT to prepare them for the real ACT in March. They were able to practice test time management and familiarize themselves with the test. The juniors will also be able to receive predicted scores, so that they can know where to improve as the school year continues. And freshmen and sophomores were also able to take the ACT Aspire testing. Both of these tests are to help students become prepared as ACT becomes more important to colleges and employers. As fall sports are beginning to end, and as they do, winter sports are getting closer to starting. This year, the fall sports consisted of girls' swimming, volleyball, tennis, and boys' soccer, along with football, cross-country, and cheer team. The winter sports that will be starting are basketball, hockey, dance team, and wrestling. And then, homecoming week was from September 30th to October 5th. Students enjoyed dress-up days, football games, the bonfire, and the dance. On the 5th, there was the parade and game, and students got to participate in banner and float-making, and our homecoming that students were able to vote for was Rachel Burke.
Excellent. Thank you, Belle, Levi. Any questions from board members to our student board representatives this evening?
Well, I just think that was an excellent, right up. Thank you.
Thank you. Very informative, covered a lot of different things, we appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Sample to go through our administrative reports for this evening.
Thanks, Gavin. We've got a few administrators currently attending a conference in Green Bay, so don't hesitate to ask any questions. I've got their reports, I've had them, and I should be able to answer all of those. First report is Linda's report for the Director of Curriculum Instruction. She goes through the educator effectiveness, my learning plan, I know of which there's now familiarity with the board. If you look at her topic summary sheet, that very first, the EE requirements link, shows you the difference between a first year, a second year, and a third year. And so, you can see the various requirements there. The indicators outline the six standards for professional teachers, and the sixth one of professionalism being very important, and I'll get to that in just a little bit as well. So, those are each one of the indicators in which teachers are evaluated. Year-end evaluations, what we've done now is the holistic evaluation form is now used, no matter whether you're a one, a two, or a three. Prior to that, if you were a first year, you did not receive an evaluation level, so to speak, and you didn't as a two, it was not done until the third year. Now, what we found, and it'd be less problematic, is every single teacher and administrator receives a holistic evaluation every single year. And so, that way, it's there for the person evaluating and the one that's being evaluated to know where they stand each and every year. And then, finally, with their criteria, the criteria links to the teacher handbook, and if you were to go to the teacher handbook, it's actually on page 14 of 25 where it links to the compensation plan, and you'll start to see some of the language in there regarding under compensation plan as it pertains to teacher evaluations. The things that, with all those requirements, there's 10 different steps that you have to be able to meet in order to progress through the salary schedule. And number 10 is very important, nine and 10, they're all important, but you need to be effective or distinguished overall with your EE rating. Number 10 says obtain and effective or distinguished with standard six specifically as it relates to professionalism. So, a lot of hard work in the last year to get to the place where we're at. I'm especially proud of the fact that everybody will have a score at the end of each and every year. Any questions at all there? Some of this should look fairly familiar, it's my learning plan, what mine is dates, and this one is educator effectiveness. Summer school report. We've added some information there. Rather than just report on this past summer, I know that at the committee level, we're going to start looking at academic return on investment for absolutely everything, and that includes summer school. So, give a little bit of the highlight. The only discrepancy I see there is in 2016 when we're talking about the enrollment for PK 7. Not sure why that number is much higher, but at least we can go back for two years or three years, and those from 2017 to 2019 seem to be more aligned. We also gave the cost breakdown for each one of the years, though that is accurate information. And so, when we started looking at the per pupil revenue amount, limit amount, as compared to the total cost of the program, we can start to see the benefit as far as dollars and cents goes, and we can start aligning our summer school offering, our courses, because we still want to try to avoid that summer slide that we always experience in the fall from our students being offered this summer. So, I think this information's going to lend itself nice to some committee work, and then we'll bring this before the board as well, especially probably a couple of different times before next summer, because we do want it to be aligned with the directions that we're going and the goals that we have. Any questions regarding the summer school report from this last year or going back four years? Joan?
Just more of an observation, and perhaps you could use it in your Halt meetings or Cadda meetings, in that it seems to come about 40,000 to 60,000, maybe an average of $50,000 short every year from a break even. So, when you're talking about academic return on investment, it's the cost of doing summer school is $50,000 then, and then you'd have to divide by the number of kids served. The number of FTEs served is, it's about a $3,000 per student program. So, if you take a look at that in terms of extracurricular activities, it's a pretty pricey program. So, I guess one of the things I would like to encourage is that we keep the program, but see if we can't trim $50,000 of expenses from it so that it can be a break even, because we've been following this, at least I've been following this one since its onset, and it seems like we're close enough, like we might be able to pull it off. This next year's budget, that's a purposeful initiative, like we bring a budget for it, and then how do we trim 50 grand off of it so that based on the history, we can break even?
Excellent. I think with teacher-student ratios being the first thing that we're going to look at, just like we fill sections during the school year, I think that's going to help a lot. And I'm also satisfied that the academic return on investment's going to mean certain things. I would start, I would like to start targeting more of our offerings to students and their needs, their specific needs. For some of our students, it's invaluable for them that they have breakfast and lunch for an additional three weeks or 12 days. Other students, we want to improve their reading or improve their math or their ELA scores, so, yeah.
Yeah, in fact, if somehow that 50,000 can be converted into increased student achievement, some correlation, then one can justify the 50,000 pretty easily, but one or the other to either get to a break even or have it tie back into the overall goal would be what at least I'd be looking for.
And then, how would you go back and correlate that with concrete facts of how you have better student achievement for the kids that were actually went to summer school and had a targeted learning plan as opposed to, and don't get me wrong, I love summer school classes, but as opposed to the more fun, you know, classes that the kids go to? Because that'd be focus on budget and student achievement, and have $50,000 a year is a lot of money.
And we have the names of the students that are participating, all of them into the fall.
Yeah, and could that be done specifically?
Head start operates that way. You know where we track them throughout their career to see whether head starts having an impact, so we could do something to that.
Absolutely.
Great.
I had a question for you also, Dr. Sample.
Well, the summer school, we have also offered to the kids at the high school because either they have failing grades and they're using... and they're using it to get that caught up. Do they still do that that way? Yeah.
Deficits or to get ahead, yeah.
So, I mean...
Most of it is deficits.
And how, I mean, take track of how well the kids are doing in the earlier grade, I mean, earlier levels than at the high school level. It's going to be kind of depending on the circumstances of what we're using it for, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's easily tracked as well. Our students know as soon as they fall behind off their graduation schedule that they need to do something. So, yeah, we can track that. Most of it's deficits. Some students do use it to get ahead with their core classes.
Sure. And I don't know how you can, I mean, it's kind of hard to, I mean, yeah, fifty thousand dollars is pricey, but it's kind of hard to trim that down for certain things, I guess.
But rather than have one teacher for four students, we're going to make sure that if it's suitable, one teacher for fifteen students, and that's going to go a long way to start breaking even. Chriskey?
Just one observation that I noticed is like fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, it was around one hundred and thirty-two, one hundred and thirty-seven, and then it jumps eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars in total cost. So I don't know why that is, but the revenue limit amount is about the same. A few hundred dollars here and there. I don't know if that would be teachers' wages or...
Looks like more offerings and more staff.
This is a pretty big jump.
I'll get that number too. Okay. Pine River School for Young Learners has their monthly data, their enrollment numbers, means for students. Jill is here if needed as well. Any questions with Jill's monthly report? Got the third Friday enrollment from Karen, and you'll see something highlighted there. Rather than just give the third Friday count, we also track back to two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, the school year. As sad as it is, so that you can see the enrollment comparison over the years. And that's the enrollment that counts. So Karen is also here in case you have any questions for that.
And did we know what we budgeted for decline and how that compared to what we reported?
Brian, your projected numbers were, the decline is a little bit greater than your projected numbers, or is that about accurate?
For the enrollment?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I was looking at summer school stuff while I wasn't paying attention. Yeah, actually, I think I mentioned in my budget summary, the third Friday FTE, we projected a total of twenty-five, twenty-seven. I think the actual third Friday FTE was like twenty-five, twenty-five, or twenty-six. It was like one or two off. So from a budget perspective, we weren't that far off, but it was just one or two FTEs. Total headcount, though, I don't usually, I, on my end, I don't really focus too much on headcount. I focus on the third Friday FTE. So I just go back and look at to find out how far the projection went there. But it's revenue limited FTE here above as spot on as you possibly get.
So this is a head count ever seen in this report, twenty-five eighty-one? That gets converted to...
Yeah, there's, actually, the twenty-five eighty-one. So there's, there's multiple ways to count kids. All right, so, okay, let me just take a look here real quick. Okay, so, yeah, so the twenty, so what the twenty-five eighty-one is, so the actual headcount, when you're, when you're looking at this, that thirty-two fourteen number, that's the total number of students that we serve, both from bricks and mortars and virtual. And so that's, that's, that's kind of, the phrase is butts and seats. Well, we don't, we got seven hundred and thirty butts at seats at home. But that's the total number of students we serve. So what we do is we subtract out the enrollment of the students and minus seven thirty-four. And we add back out, we add back in the students that opened and rolled out, so that's the one oh one. And we get twenty-five eighty-one. So that's an adjusted headcount. But that's not the revenue limited FTE because now for, what I have to do for revenue is I got to take that number, and I got to take all the four K kids, and I got to count them as point six instead of one. And so that's where we go from twenty-five eighty-one down to twenty-five twenty-seven, or whatever number I said it was. Twenty-five twenty-five, I think, was the final number.
So twenty-five twenty-five is what our revenue would be calculated off.
Correct. Yeah.
Missed it by one, it sounds like.
One or two, yeah.
Well, just out of curiosity, we heard last year at NTC and I've heard it here, that our enrollment seemed to be going up. What, any idea what happened in between? We thought we'd be a little bit ahead of eighteen and nineteen. Eighteen, nineteen were actually quite a ways to go. Did we lose that many students?
From the NTC, I know that, Brian, you run three or four different studies.
So we did, we actually, as part of the facilities planning process this last summer, we did have the high population laboratory, redo a demographic study, and they are projecting continued declines over the next five to ten years. The decline is a little slower than what they projected five years ago, back in the two thousand, six or seven years ago now, back in the two thousand twelve study. But we, and we can put that on a future board meeting once we get into the facilities view of things. But there's still steady decline over the next ten years. And they do four different models based on different ways of projecting basically kindergarten enrollments and births. And all four models are still projecting a decline in enrollment. Down to about, I think most of the models, I think all four of the models have us somewhere in the twenty-three hundreds at the end of ten years. Five or ten years, I can't remember now. It's been a while. It's been a few weeks since I looked at the report, but we're going to, we're going to continue to lose according to that particular prediction.
I don't remember who. Do you remember the same report?
I do. You and I had talked about it a little bit. We were confused because it sort of flew in the face of what we knew was happening up here. Maybe we should get that report and see what data that NTC got.
Who did the study for that?
Yeah, because it was...
It's totally opposite of what we're hearing.
Yeah, it was totally opposite of what we knew was happening.
Last year, Merle was supposed to level off last year, and this year was going to start increasing. Small numbers, five or six students.
Yeah, the report that the EPL did back in two thousand twelve did show that. They had, they, again, they had four projections. Two of the projections showed an increase this year. And then a slight increase over the next five years. And then two of the projections showed kind of a bump and then continued decrease. And so that's, I think that's kind of, we saw not quite a bump, but almost a leveling off last year. We only dropped by about ten students. But now this year, we, or ten FTEs. And then this year, we dropped by another sixty or seventy FTEs from last year, so now we're back into that. So I think what happened was is, and it might have been an older study that maybe NTC was looking at. Because we certainly, that study from seven years ago certainly did suggest that there might be an increase.
Two thousand twelve.
Yeah. The new updated study now that was just completed this summer shows a continued decline, fairly linear.
You have to give me approval permission to get into that spreadsheet because then I want to access that.
I need to ask permission. I looked at it during the week and Karen gave it to me.
Let me see, let's see.
Did you request it in here? Okay, then, then...
Yeah, and I think you did too, right, Paul?
I don't know.
Maybe we did.
Check, check your, I, I tried. I don't know if it's going to go to Karen to do it or not, but I tried giving that to you.
I guess, I just have a question quickly. Sorry, Kevin. I guess I have two. First was that. But for the head start count, are we declining there also, or we're rising?
Jill, do you remember up in, what you're doing in?
We are, we are the same. We have an eighty-eight head start. We are full, and we have a waiting list.
And I guess I'm just kind of curious what Maria's point was, is when they got that study done, depending on versus our study seven years ago versus how current that one was. It would be interesting to see, I guess, the numbers and why we have such different, you know, evaluation that I guess people...
Over the last five years, head start for a kid has been pretty consistent, at about a hundred to a hundred and ten students. Kindergarten actually kind of goes up and down, almost, almost on a every other year basis. One year they're about a hundred and thirty-something, the next they're a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty. Then they're down again, and then they're up again. And there hasn't been a consistent trend kindergarten-wise that way.
I'm just curious of the difference in whoever, if they're, you know, you're tall and I can look into that. Just, if it's from seven years ago, or if it's from recent, you know, maybe there's another study that we missed. I don't know. I mean, not saying on anybody's part, but you never know. There's different things for different areas.
Mr. Schmidt, to your question.
Yeah, I was just basically a comment. The, the data indicates we lost three hundred and twenty-four kids over the last six years.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is, you know, the equivalent, almost, I guess, of a whole Kate Goodrich gone from our district. It has about a three million dollar price tag of revenue. And the expenditures over the last six years have gone up, equivalent of three million dollars additional. So like, we have like a six to seven million dollar gap over the last six years of real, of real money. And so I think we're getting to the point where when we talk about master facility plans, when we talk about changing things, we don't have a choice. We have three hundred and twenty-four empty seats than we did six years ago, and seven million missing dollars from our budget that has been generated from that. So stay tuned, I guess, as we move forward because this is the data that we need to use to justify some tough decisions because there's nothing else you can do when you look, when you're seven million dollars difference in six years period.
Anything else? Thank you, Brian. Eddie's report is next. This is a summary of the forty-nine and thirty topics that he's been working on since the last board meeting. Any questions on any of these subheadings? A lot of it's going to committee, yes.
I have some. Yeah, Eddie, can you come up? So, numbers can be kind of misleading, so, and I know you're new, so I don't know how many numbers you have from your past predecessor. But there was, it says thirty-two resignations. Is that pretty normal for a year? Or was this a high, high number of resignations last year?
I don't know if it's higher or low for us. I had a conversation, a conversation with the HR director at DC Everest, and she said they have about thirty, I think thirty-five teachers. Now, that's thirty-two total, that's aides, teachers, and then the whole nine yards. So, no, I don't know exactly what our historical data is on that, but...
How many total employees do we have? What's the percentage?
We're around three hundred and seventy, three seventy-five somewhere here.
So it's close to ten percent, eight or nine percent.
Yeah.
I guess that's pretty normal. Have you noticed anything? Is it more the new people, or is it a lot of long-term?
There was a mix. Some of the people who left, I know, were talking about situations of all expulsions, kind of retirements. There was a mix. Nothing jumped off the page at any at this point, but I also don't know all the context of those people either. So, yeah, it's hard to...
I was disappointed to see only three exit interviews out of the thirty-two.
I looked in a number of places because I was wondering if I was missing them at first. Like, are they somewhere, are they? And the three that are out there are ones that I know I've gotten since I got here in July. There's Google surveys that get sent out, and you hit basically the responses button, and it repopulates it with all those responses that have come in. And there's just a lot of them that are missing. So one of the things I'll make sure we get next year, hopefully, are a lot of the data.
I guess what I'm looking for is if there was a pattern, if there was one area that it, you know, was more than others, and then that way we could fix it. You know, if we don't know what the reason is, we can't, we can't fix it, you know? And maybe it's not a problem. Maybe that's a normal turnover.
Yeah, I can give a little bit of the historical context. Thirty-two is pretty average for us. It's down from the year before, I believe, if I remember correctly. What we had the year before was, had a lot of retirements that year. Probably two or three times the normal number of retirements that we had. But, yeah, we're usually in that ten percent range on any given year. So it's, it's probably a little higher than average. We're probably, average is probably in the twenty to twenty-five range. But it's certainly not our highest year since I've been here, anyway. We've had much higher years.
Okay. Yeah, this one, it just seems like a lot, but when you've got three hundred and seventy employees, it's still less than ten percent. So, you know, I guess that doesn't bite you as bad as the thirty-two.
You know, when I read through, I read through some of the comments and things that people who did respond, what they wrote and things. There's a number of mentionings, historical things around it, tend a little bit, and, you know, just some of that sentiment, I guess I'll say. But when I was in, when I was in West Dallas a couple of years in a row, there was a lot of turmoil. We had about, there were about a hundred staff members and one in the high school I taught in. And we had about thirty to thirty-five percent turnover for about three years in a row. So, you know, ten percent, like Brian said, isn't, it's not bad. It's not unheard of. Not that it could be better, it's just, it's not an overwhelmingly alarming amount, I'd say.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't some pattern that we could fix, you know? Okay, thanks.
And I guess to go off what Nup's saying, we've been asking for that for like two years, to get a spreadsheet that showed where the resignations or terminations were happening, or excuse me, just resignations were happening, what building, what department, what the reason given was, so we can identify if there's a trend, if there's something that needs to be fixed at a building level, at a department level. So we haven't seen that. So the actual data, so I think we're all thirsting for, where is this happening?
We're working on the location, and I've not seen anything with just, and that's year to year to year. But it's nice to be able to put them up on, on visible for everybody visual.
Right.
The other thing that we're working on, and this will come later, this will come later in this meeting. It will also come to the next committee and then the November board, non-renewal type things. And so we've also identified because some of the resignations tie into a little flavor of that as well. So to pinpoint some reasons, pinpoint the locations.
Yeah, and I think we talked about doing that like on quarterly basis. I can't remember, maybe I'm making it up in my head. When your predecessor was here, that the board could see, maybe not on a monthly basis, but on a quarterly basis, where this was happening, what the reasons given, just so we have an idea and we're not guessing. You know, a ten percent may not be a lot, but you're right, we could probably do better and to identify why it's happening. It would be the only way to repair that.
That are, we actually just had a, one of the resignations on the report tonight, this first one of the year. So in the last month, when we gave them the original set of data, nobody reached out to, I don't think to John or any of them, changes for the survey. So I don't want to change a ton because I know where we were with, we were being satisfied or not satisfied or whatever. But I did add building location to it and trying to find that balance between, you know, some folks don't want to give up that their identity when they're doing it. So I don't want to discourage people from taking it, but we can definitely get...
No, not with regard to the survey. I don't, I don't, I don't need to know if somebody wants to be anonymous about their comments. Just from an HR perspective, this person left this elementary school, was there for this many years, and taught this. Now, obviously, if you see a pattern that everybody in the science department at the high school, just making it up, decides to exit within a quarter, there's probably a problem. So just, just that data would be great to see. So just, just that data would be great to see.
John, I have a question.
Yeah, I think that's where we're driving. Like when we look at finances, we go as far back as seven to ten years to kinda look at trends. So if we can backfill data so that we can see, you know, the question is, is what was it as a percentage as compared to two thousand and fifteen? Because some board members knew, know what happened in fifteen. Last year we did the salary schedule where we capped things off and this is set for twenty years and people made decisions. And then you can kinda mark those onto that timeline and say, this was this, but here's the reason why. And then that locks in the future. So future boards will look back and say, oh, we lost fifty people that year, something bad was happening. No, it was actual natural thing. It's been reported on a continuum. So I think that's what we've been asking for the last couple of years is just a continual flow of data. But in order to create that, reach back maybe five years and try to rebuild it from personnel reports and.
And the reasons become real important. The survey becomes very important. Could lose three, as an example, in the science department, but two of them because their spouses relocated with their work. Now we, now it's not at all.
Yeah, I was just gonna go off, because, I mean, a few years ago, we were starting that plan of retirement benefit packages and stuff. And so there were a lot of people who retired at that time, I think, three, four years ago.
Fourteen, fifteen. Even those grandfathered, yeah.
And then some were grandfathered in and then some rushed to retire, so they got their whole benefit package. And then, so we did see like, I think, a rise there for people leaving. But, you know, going off of three hundred and seventy-five employees around that part, we're a small district, so ten percent. I mean, it does feel like it's a lot compared to a district in Everest or Wausa because there's more of a community, more population there. So ten percent maybe does sound small, but to a small community, it's actually kind of a huge percentage. I mean, you know, but I just wanted to throw in that the retirements a few years ago of why we probably saw a big gap in people leaving. And that, you know, ten percent to a small community, community seems bigger than it would in a bigger, like, West Dallas and Milwaukee or somewhere around there. But I would like to see the data as well.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Eddie. Brian. Next report is the quarterly out-of-state travel report. I'll talk more about some of those coming up too. Also, because of the title dollars, we had a few people from Trinity attending a conference as well. And partial conference fees were, were paid out of the title. Quarterly summary of purchases between five thousand and just under ten thousand. Ryan Dashers included his report for purchases, contracted services. Anything glaring to stick out to you on that report, Brian's report? Brian also provided Laura's participation report, food participation for the month of September as well as the October edition of the board fights. Fight, the name sounds kinda catchy. Does a real nice job with, with her monthly food service reporter, talker does, Laura does. Brian also has his regular monthly status report. Brian is here if anybody has any questions on the monthly budget update.
I do have a question in regards to. Do we need to at some point look at the food balance monies that's accumulating? Am I reading it right that there's about two hundred thousand dollars? Do we need to at some point do something with that, whether it's a capital improvement or?
Yeah. So DPI, the USDA regulations limit the maximum you can accumulate to three months of your operating expenses. So we're about another hundred thousand from that, if I remember correctly the last time I calculated the number out. So we're, we're okay there. And then we have held prices flat for the last two years, this year and last. And so when we get to the budget revisions, you'll see that the projected surplus for this year is only about eight thousand. So that, that projected surplus this year and last year has been shrinking a little bit. So, and then the other thing is, is that's, that, that surplus is what's allowing us. We, we need to have a big enough one so that if we, if we wanna hold prices flat, we need to have enough fund balance so that by December thirty-one, or is it January one? One of those two dates, that there's a, there's, as of that date, there's a positive fund balance. And so what happens is, is that two hundred actually goes up and down throughout the course of the year. And depending on where revenues are, and December has, has a tendency to be a low month because you've only got two to three weeks of school. And so that fund balance drops out pretty, pretty low in, in December. So it's gotta be high enough that we can still maintain that positive fund balance at the end of the year, calendar year, so that we don't, aren't, we aren't forced to be raising prices that following year. And so right now, I don't remember what last year's fund balance was as of the end of December. It's only, it's only a couple of ten thousand dollars. So it's not huge at that particular point. So we don't wanna.
Well, at this number's mark.
Yeah.
So you're basically using it like a line of credit? And, and you wanna keep it in the two to three hundred thousand dollar range?
Yeah.
And at three hundred thousand, we're forced to use it, but.
Right.
Our plan right now is to just maintain it for available funds to.
Yeah.
As a line.
Yeah. Goal is to try and hit that three-month mark and then, and then reinvest it to the program from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Kesha's report is next. There were a few questions during the week, which I always appreciate on Kesha's report. First one has to do with the Apple survey. And we've got four different levels of technology use or technology effectiveness. Substitution would be, for example, I'm replacing my typewriter now with a laptop and that's what our teachers are doing. They're just saying, hey, I'm not using the typewriter, I'm using this keyboard. That's, that's the lower level of using technology. Augmentation is where you start using it the way that technology should be used for the most effective use of the students. Modification, now you're owning that process and you're applying it to many levels of what you're doing in the classroom. And then redefinition is, is doing something with technology that probably has not been done and you're gonna be speaking in a national conference from, right, by utilizing that. So what you'll see is the Apple survey results in time is you're talking, we're talking about these three levels. Substitution, then we have a substitution slash augmentation, just getting into it. Then fully on augmentation all the way up to redefining or modification and redefinition. So what we're doing here is we're comparing each one of the buildings. This is a self-assessment. There's no quiz. There's not saying demonstrate this and we'll tell you what level you're at. This is a self-assessment as far as how staff feels, feels comfortable with the technology that they've been provided. So for example, high school of two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, we had eighty-six and then this percent. Eighty-six percent of our teachers were still at the substitution phase. The next year, that number dropped a little bit, which is good. We want that number to drop. It only dropped to eighty-one. And then you'll, you should see the percentages then increase as we go towards green, the yellow, the red, and then all the way up to redefinition. What is confusing about this survey is we did the survey, our own survey for the first two years, then Apple came out with their own survey, which was a much better product. It gave us much better data. And that's where you actually have to click into the results then and see what they are. So I'm gonna go into the high school results, two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, open that. It gives more data than anybody could ever wanna know except for Kesha. She uses all this data. But at the top of page two, then, you're seeing what we've been measuring ourself or what our staff has been self-assessing themselves. At the top of page two, you've got ten percent are moderately unprepared. It's color-coded just exactly like the augmentation, substitution, redefinition. Sixty-four percent are moderately prepared and very prepared is twenty-six percent. So just to see how that compares, and now I've already forgot the numbers I just read. But I'm gonna open the next years, scroll down to the second page. And I see that we have eight percent unprepared, seventy percent are moderately prepared, and twenty-two percent are prepared. We have to factor into this any staff turnover, new staff versus veteran staff, those types of things, how long they've had it. A couple of interesting things to point out and not at all picking on Pine River, but Pine River does not have one-on-one technology. And so they have a hundred percent of their, their, their teaching staff are in the substitution phase right now. So that gives Kesha the information that she needs when she's forming her own SLOs and her own evaluation and the evaluation of that, of those that she evaluates in her department for not only just technology usage, but how, how well they're using it, how effective they are as they report and self-assess themselves. Most of it's pretty self-explanatory with getting to know the technology team, the digital learning challenge, which is really cool. Great for our students. I'm still looking to get into the drone club myself. It won't let me in yet. The report out for the iPad insurance update on number four. iPad expectations and guidelines. And there was a question earlier this week regarding, you can see the high school, middle school, elementary. And then when you get to the middle school, high school, she's gonna refer back just like any disciplinary matter to our bullying protocol and our season assist because sometimes these, this technology is used to harass or bully other students. And so that's why she pulls in the existing standards when it comes to discipline and because these tools are being used. And so that ends up in her report as well. Any questions that I might be able to answer for Kesha? She is gonna go a little bit more into detail, I believe, as early as next month when it comes to where our teachers are at with their comfort level with their own technology in the classroom.
You know, we saw like with the kids beginning to take the iPads home, more breakage problems and stuff like that than we would in like a normal quarter.
The numbers were surprisingly down. The numbers did support that it was okay to send them home. It's always a few and, and, and that will happen, but no, the numbers were much more favorable than I thought they would be. I know she was a little nervous about that because they're gone for two and a half months and let's see what comes back. We had a high number, a high return rate, very high. And my superintendent's report, you can see the activities that I was involved with. The district scorecard is there. We always keep that front and center. I bolded some of the, some of the events that I'm gonna report out on. John Smith, Brian Dashard, Lyndon, and myself had an opportunity to attend the GFPA conference in Chicago on September twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh. That was part of the out-of-state travel report. Learned a lot. We got to see, I think, the networking that we did with other districts and the professionals that we got to hear and apply it to Merrill. We didn't learn a lot from other districts as much because some districts were working on, there's a wide variety there. There was probably what, twenty-six states in attendance. It was, it was somewhat of a national conference. One very, very large high school district, or school district in Florida, was hoping to achieve fifty percent graduation rate. And so their problems are different, our problems are different. But we all have one thing in common and that's how to, how to utilize smarter spending and best practices when it comes to school budget. So I, I can speak for all four of us. I think we all found it very worthwhile. John, your take?
Yeah, I was fascinated by a couple of things. I mean, there's districts that have tens of thousands of students and therefore they have big billion-dollar budgets that they deal with. And so percentage shortfalls in their terminology are still millions, tens of millions of dollars. So it becomes all that more important to get it right the first time. And there's an article out there, I think on Rochester, New York, that, you know, had a, had a negligible difference in their budget, but it's a fifty million dollar, because when you do the math backwards, it's, you know, all of our entire budget. So that kinda opened my eyes. And then other issues in regards to giving us some comfort in that we're going in the right direction. This concept of the GFPA and on spending model. If the public is demanding that we work within our means and that we make good decisions, this lends the credibility of it. So I'm not going to speak to my opinion of whether or not we need this or we don't need that. There is evidence-based literature that states that if you wanna make a good decision, this is what another district did, this is what the result was, you should follow along. So it's a really objective way of, of running the finances for the district, which is, was very refreshing for me.
Very unemotional decisions. And unlike Texas and Florida, we get to see our community. Some of the departments were so large, even the central office, that you may have six and seven directors within the finance and just for them to get together. The accountability issues that I heard, I heard things like, you know, some of the principals were resistant. Well, when you've got, you know, eighty-three principals in your district, you're not gonna see them all in one place. It's like filling, putting them in the auditorium and saying, okay, now go out and do this. And then by the time you figure out they're not doing it, the years pass. So it, it was, I was glad to be Merrill.
Hundred and thirty schools in one city?
We had the pleasure of entertaining Mary Felskowski at a special finance HR committee meeting. She met with several board members and we gave her, Brian presented a PowerPoint, which was a portion of what Linda had presented to the board the month before. You can see the PowerPoint presentation as presented and then some of the data retrieved information that we presented there as well. Also, with speaking of Mary Felskowski, the CISA nine school district superintendent had the privilege of having not only Mary, but Tom Tiffany was there as well as Pat Snyder. And so we had a variety of different topics. I was a little surprised, I guess. With everything that they have on their plates, all three of the legislators were, were thinking that school counselors, school psychologists, and mental health workers all kinda did the same thing. And I said, no, they're very, very exclusive in their areas. And so they were good listeners. They were good note-takers. And we'll see where that comes as far as talking about social work and mental health counselors and especially in central Wisconsin. That continues to be an issue and the supply is way more than the demand right now. Ken and I attended the annual chamber celebrations and awards. This is our third year in attendance and pleasantly surprised that Merrill Larry Public Schools was a nominee for the large business of the year. We lost that, we didn't lose, we, Wine Brenner Shoe Company was recognized as the large business of the year. And, but you know, more than ever, our school district was mentioned by a lot of different businesses in their speech and proudly partner with us and work with young people. And so it was very refreshing. Great evening, really. My own goal-setting conferences with those that I evaluate will wrap up on the, on the twenty-fifth. Everything we do by this Friday. And then everybody has one week after that to complete their own self-assessment, make sure that their own goals are tight. Which really helped all of us that are being evaluated is, is how aligned we are now. Not only with the district scorecard of being smarter spending and our other pillars, but there's not a, there's not a person in this district, not an employee in the district that does not align to our district scorecard and our student achievement goals and all of that. So we're becoming much, much tighter. It's just a matter of making sure that we put the same information in all of those places. And so the alignment has been fantastic. You see our cabinet meeting topics for the last four weeks of last month. Any questions on my report? Jeremy?
Just something I wanted to add on to the large business of the year recognition for.
for Wine Runner, is one of the criteria that was listed as favoring Wine Runner for the award was their committee involvement, and more specifically, the boot camp program. We have Wine Runner right here in Merrill High School with, with students that, if I remember correctly, they built boots, is that correct?
They built boots.
And so I, you know, you mentioned, I've mentioned MAPS, you know, partnering, and I just thought that was, you know, it was interesting, and I guess it's good to know that that's, that's one thing that they were recommended for doing, was partnering with MAPS and carrying that program, which was, I imagine, very educational for students and taught, you know, valuable work skills.
Yeah, it was a great program, and it remains a, yeah, and that's where I'm thinking, what about, you mentioned this. I know, it really was a very nice evening, we're not there for the award, but continue our partnerships and networking opportunities. Thank you. Kevin, that's it for me?
All right, thank you, Dr. Sample, for going through our administrative reports and your superintendent's report. This time I'd like to move on the agenda to committee reports. Our first committee report is the Finance HR Committee. There was some attached draft minutes from our October second committee meeting. John Smith is chair, and other members of the committee are available for questions. Does anyone have any questions on those minutes? The next committee report that we have this evening is Facilities Committee. The draft minutes from the October second committee meeting were attached or provided for us. Myself as chair, and the other members of the committee are available for questions. Does anyone have specific questions from the Facilities Committee perspective this evening? Go ahead, Maria.
One of the items on the, on one of the reports I saw, I'm sorry, what was it? It was about the safety measures? And I'm just wondering if in that umbrella, have we talked about safety of this building? We have, you know, made all of the schools and buildings safe. It seems like administration is not as safe. So I'm just wondering if that's part of that discussion?
We do have a safety subcommittee that reports back through, and so we do get some updates. I know Dale and his, his team were going through, and he stayed building by building. Maybe Dr. Sample recalls specifically any data on this building, but I know they have gone through that with our Student Resource Officer, Mr. Heckendorf, and the Merrill Police Department, but, you know, they were still concluding their data. Do you remember something that I don't?
We do, we're looking anywhere from thirteen to fifteen thousand for the entryway, and that would be film on one, metal doors on the other, camera embusing people in. That's the biggest one, probably. And so, yes, the other, the buildings, the students get first priority, and so I know that that's on its radar. And then part of us are always wondering, and it's certainly a non-emotional side, how much do we put into a metal building type thing, but we don't wanna compromise safety. And so you can see some energy efficiencies here. While it looks nice, it's very energy efficient with our lighting. That took a couple of days, and so we did, Dale and I just talked about that this morning at a schools conference, about what the cost would be, and so that we're all not just sitting here waiting for those doors to open.
Right, okay.
I appreciate it, and I'll keep it on the front of safety as a lead gen of facilities.
Sounds good, thank you.
John? And on that subject, did I read that the safety grant is still, hasn't been executed yet, so the monies just haven't been spent? Is that the case, and is that what we're going to spend the money on?
There, there, a portion of it has been spent, I can find out what, how much is left out of that safety grant, yeah. I don't know what portion or percentage is used yet.
Any other questions for the Facilities Committee members, or based on the last None, let's move on the agenda to the CTP, or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee Minutes, provided from the October ninth committee meeting. Maria Volpe is chair, and other members of that committee are present for questions. Do we have any questions this evening? John?
I do. I wasn't able to attend the meeting, and I see that the therapy dog discussion is in your minutes, but it's a bit vague, and we had another presentation on the subject. So, at the meeting, which that's where I would hope the discussion would take place, was it determined that MAPS would like more therapy dogs?
I can answer that.
Go ahead, Maria.
Paul, Linda, I were all there. Karen had presented, and Staker has put Ted presented. What we rely on in the discussion is relying on administration to ensure that we're not compromising policies, that the need, is the need being met with the current therapy dog. And it was determined, discussed, that the need is being met, so we made the decision at that point in time, excuse me, that it's really not up to the board to add therapy dogs, that it would be something, if administration came to us and said, we need more therapy dogs, then we would address it at that point in time.
Or a policy.
Exactly.
So we also are satisfied with policies that we have in place in regards to animals in our district?
Animals in the district, non-district property.
So basically, the conclusion of the matter is, we are satisfied with the therapy dogs that we have, and we're satisfied with the policies we have in place according to the CPT committee and the administration?
Yes, absolutely. And I think Linda and Paul can both agree that that's how, that was what was determined at the committee level.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions for Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee? All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the next section of our agenda this evening, for unfinished business. We did table policy second reading for policy thirty-one twenty, forty-one twenty, employment of professional support staff at our last meeting, for a clear definition, as we recall, of relatives, and there is a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening?
Administration recommends keeping the policy language as it was presented since September twenty-four, twenty nineteen, regular board meeting, and approving policies thirty-one twenty slash forty-one twenty, employment of professional slash support staff of second reads.
Second.
Motion by Jeremy, second by Paul. Is there any discussion? John?
I'm reading it quickly, but the attached document has struck out on it, and then language, so are we, what are we striking in order to keep, I guess, are we just moving the paragraph up?
We moved it up so that the, it's defined first, and then it goes into more operations after that, so that the definition applies then.
Which was part of our brainstorming or quick discussion last month, was what they concluded to do. Thank you. Any other clarifying points, Danny?
Actually, I think what happened is what's on the agenda right now is showing what the changes that the board wanted to see at the September twenty-third meeting, and administration is recommending that you go back to what it was. That means going back to the struck, struck out language and not adding that paragraph.
It was really emotional, you're saying that administration was suggesting us to go back, yeah.
And that was original?
That wasn't there before.
Right.
This was there before. So.
So we end up with this at the top?
No.
It goes back to that?
It goes back to, that's how I started.
And I think when we toss that back and forth, it all came out to the same, it's just, where do we put it? So I, I think in the end, that it was, there were no changes recommended, and I guess we went back to the original order?
Yeah.
And the paragraph where relatives were mentioned.
With that being clarified, is there any adjustments to the motion or the second? Clarifying point or question, John, go ahead.
Clarifying it again.
Yes.
I'm staring at this, am I motioning, or am I, am I voting to move that paragraph to the second paragraph, or am I voting to negate that second paragraph and leave it embedded in the now fourth paragraph? Basically, is that paragraph moving or not?
Eddie, did you wanna speak to that policy?
I think the table has been brought back, because it's really undecided of what we're asking for here, how are we supposed to make?
Well, right now, it's just location, I think.
The wording, the wording you want to say, but is it moving, paragraph moving?
I think, I, I vaguely remember this, because I think I'm the one who suggested moving the paragraph up. And so I think that's why it's like that right now, is it just made more sense to me to move it up.
Define it early?
Have it early, and then, and then have it in, I think that was the discussion, as I remember.
But I do remember Linda talking about it, board members are the only ones that have a com, it could be a conflict of interest, not staff members, board members are the ones that hire the staff members, so there was a member.
So if you're related by the definition to a staff member, you have to recuse yourself from this call. Was the, the spirit of, is the spirit of this policy?
That, that new par, that paragraph that exists right now has the word staff slash board member. The original paragraph has no word staff, it just says board members. So that, it now looks as though it matches exactly what we talked about in the meeting, but that would be running now contrary to what the motion says, the recommended motion. So basically, administration is saying, don't change anything, you have the attached document, except that all of our recommendations are changed.
It shows what the board wanted.
Right.
Yeah, I, I remember.
But administration is recommending.
As it appeared here, this is the way I remember it. So I think the notes somehow got mixed up.
And it was staff, board member, when the entire intent of this, because the board hires, is board members relative?
No, I think, I think, I think the way it's written, in the attachment, is the way the committee finally read out.
I think so, too. And if that's the case, then you would need a rescension of the motion. If they agreed, rescind, or we can table it, and you guys can take another crack at it later.
Let's keep the second, Jeremy.
So I, I ask you, can the motioning party in the second, if you're?
I suppose.
Jeremy and Paul are willing to rescind that motion?
What do you think?
Yes. Motion has been rescinded, if I have a, a motion then, John?
A motion to approve policy thirty-one twenty and policy forty-one twenty as printed in the attachments of our agenda.
Second.
Motion by John, a second by Maria, do we have any additional questions or discussion on the motion? Paul?
What did, what did you change? Didn't we, wasn't that the motion that Jeremy made?
No.
Did I misunderstand your motion? I'm sorry, I thought you were motioning to keep that paragraph.
The original motion was to keep the language as it was prior to last month's meeting.
Okay.
The motion he gave now is to basically include the changes that we're seeing today.
I thought that's what we were doing before, I apologize.
I think we're there, we're almost there.
I, I agree. Any other clarifying questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next part of the agenda is our Board of Education business, and that first topic this evening is the updated athletic code of conduct language. There was a topic summary sheet from our activities director, John Miller, and principal from high school, Shannon Murray. That was information only. They're not in attendance, but if we had any quick questions or discussion, we could ask Dr. Sample?
We're making the language more specific. Sometimes there's a need to change our language as situations arise, and so this makes it much more clear, I think. And that's really it.
Seeing no questions, we'll move on to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty revised budget update and levy certification. Summary was provided by our Director of Finance, Brian Dashar, with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening?
Recommended motion to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget revisions as presented to certify the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty property tax levy at ten million nine hundred fifty-two thousand forty dollars.
Second. By Jeremy, a second by Nubs. Do we have any questions or discussion on the motion of this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the approval of four K contracts for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, with the topic summary sheet provided by Jill Seaman, with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
I recommend a motion to approve the MAPS four K contracts for two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year.
Second.
Motion by Nubs, a second by Jeremy. Any questions or discussions on the motion of this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the Head Start Annual Report. The annual report data was provided by Jill Seaman with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening?
Recommend motion to approve the Head Start Annual Report as presented to the board.
Motion by Jeremy, do I have a second? Second by Linda. Any discussion or questions on this topic, or this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item this evening on our agenda is the Head Start training for Board of Education. Some data and some homework provided. If there was any questions on that, I'm sure we reached out to Jill during this past week. If anyone wanted to highlight anything or clarify anything with Jill in attendance, we could certainly do so. Otherwise, please see the handout where we need to print their name, sign their name, put the date on there, and provide that back to Tammy. We're going through all of that governance training agreement, and that training folder is important and a role that we play here, and utilize the school board for, so thank you, everyone, for taking your time to do that. Our next item on the agenda this evening is our proposal to increase the substitute teacher pay from one hundred dollars per day to a hundred and ten per day. There is a topic summary sheet provided by Brian Dashar, and a recommended motion from the Finance HR Committee. Do we have that motion this evening? A motion. Maria?
Remove to a food raising subpay to one hundred ten dollars per day and fifty-five dollars per half-day effective October twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen.
Motion by Maria, do we have a second?
Someone?
Second by Christie. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next topic on our agenda this evening is the building. Next topic on our agenda this evening is the building or department budget carryover proposals with the topic summary sheet provided by Brian Dasher. There is a recommended motion from the Finance HR Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
Move to approve the budget carryover proposals as presented.
Motion by Maria, do I have a second? John? Do we have any questions or discussion on the motion for this topic? John, go ahead.
Just one question and to Brian, did we define what length of time they have to spend the carryover amount? Get it on the record?
Yes. The policy states April, either April first or April fifteenth, I'm forgetting which, which one, I'm just looking it up here real quick. April fifteenth they have until, they have to complete their credit by April fifteenth.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on this topic or the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next agenda item this evening is the parent and teacher calendar surveys with an attached topic summary sheet from Dr. Sample with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I move to approve the parent teacher calendar surveys for consideration in period of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-one, twenty-two calendars.
Motion by Paul, do I have a second? Second by Nubs. Any discussion on this motion or topic, your questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next agenda item is the non-renewal process, a draft review. Recommended by the Finance HR Committee to forward this item to the full board for discussion. So there was some non-renewal guidelines drafted and Dr. Sample, if you could highlight a few things there. You have any questions for yourself or Eddie, I know it's going to be a continual review with an opportunity to, to highlight some of the work that's already been done.
Absolutely, and that's the reason for the color coding. Eddie's dedicated a lot of time to this, it's a very important process for everybody. And, and so you'll, you'll see, you see what you see right now, this is a work in progress, this is a draft. You'll also see at the next committee meeting, more talk about non-renewal and then for the November board meeting. In fact, Eddie, that's where he presented a voiceover presentation. So just like I did with this particular item, I'll draw your attention to that as soon as the agenda gets posted to. So if you can go through, I believe it's about seventeen to twenty minutes long. It's, it's as condensed as we can get it for a very important topic and so Eddie made it so that you can look at it any time between when, once the November board meeting agenda is posted, I'll write up until the November board meeting and then of course come with questions to the November board meeting. So this is the first, the first part of that process is looking to see the changes and the recommendations that, that, that we're offering right now and those things that we're considering. And then there will be one more committee meeting, one more board level. I don't see this as ever staying, staying in concrete, I see this as, as coming toward the board quite often. Very much we compared it in the past to the student expulsion process. It's a, it's a serious matter and so we want to make sure that we're all on the same page. Any questions regarding Eddie's work so far?
John, just a point of clarity from your perspective, Dr. Sample, because I think we talked about this, it's a bit unique and the board might want to know this, in that this isn't a policy and this isn't an administrative guideline, but this is a philosophy.
Correct.
And so we don't, there's only one other thing we have philosophy discussions on and that's expulsion. And so there won't be an associated policy because the conditions and the circumstances of non-renewal are governed by law. And so this is just something that the administration is seeking so that if we all agree on this philosophically, they know they'll be meeting our expectations when they go in and, and carry it out. Is that a good summary of the discussion?
That's exactly it, just like we mean annually with our expulsions, that process is tightened, we need to know, we all need to be on the same page. So, so we don't want to spin our wheels and we don't want to waste the board's time. And so this is a philosophy that, that by the end of this process and even as early as November, we're all on the same page and we all understand the expectations.
Yeah, so if we're ever faced with a circumstance, we should be able to retrospectively look back on this document and the things that we were taught or told. And then there would be an alignment and so the night of the discussion would not be the best time to have those questions. It would be right now so that administration can execute their work.
Absolutely. Yes. Nicely done.
And I'm only offering this because I've had a lot of discussion with this and so I'm offering it to everybody now so that we don't, we're not confused moving forward.
So, okay, how do you understand then, so we would be holding administration, our expectation of what they did to this document in conjunction, in conjunction with what the law states should be done? Or is this more of something that administration is going to use, but we shouldn't be at a non-renewal, I mean whatnot conference? That we'd be looking at this and saying, well, you really didn't do this part or you weren't thorough in coaching, which is not by law required.
Sure.
But by this document, that's what our expectation is. Can we really hold them responsible with regard to this document?
Yeah, we're holding each other accountable, is the way I'm saying.
Accountable, excuse me.
Yeah, we're holding each other accountable with everything in this document so that we're all on the same page. Some of it's going to go to Wisconsin statute, some of it is, is purely philosophy when it comes to standard six and professionalism. You've got six standards, but, but unprofessional behavior can, can rise to a new level. And, and that's through history and experience and, and research. So that's why we're putting everything in one document so that we both understand each other and we can both hold each other accountable and we hold ourselves accountable to the board.
I, I guess the part that makes me a little bit uncomfortable and maybe it's most founded, I like, I like the idea and I like that there's expectations. I just don't know if we as a board can hold anyone accountable to a philosophy per se. Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, I had the same struggle because I kept asking, is this a policy, is this a straight guideline? And as we kept comparing this and a lot of this discussion to place in Human Resource Finance Committee, it's, you don't have to have any reason really for non-renewal. I think that's the real trick to this whole thing. So what happens is because there is no reason needed to non-renew someone, as we go through the process of contesting a non-renewal, we all walk in with a philosophical understanding of what we would like to have seen take place.
Right.
That is not defined in law and that's not defined in policy. And so this kind of lays the groundwork for, okay, we don't have to have any reason, but benign board members are going to have their reasons for saying yes or no. And if they follow this step-by-step process, which trust me, wasn't my idea, I'm just interpreting it. If they follow this process, the administration can be confident that we won't disagree in the nth hour, that, that they didn't do the right thing. I think they're trying to get some assurances to, in the same manner of if you brought a kid in here for an expulsion for chewing bubble gum in the hallway, you say, well, it's clearly against the rules, you can't have bubble gum in the hallway, we'd all be like, you know, we're not expelling them. But it's the nineteenth time he's chewed bubble gum, so it's a repeated refusal. And they, they want to make sure we're all on that same page. Because technically you don't need any reason, but we bring our reasons with us.
And not to be confused at all with termination, which sometimes as you read in here, you can say, well, it is a fireable offense, no, it's not termination, it's non-renewal. Finishing up your contract and not being offered another one. The total foundation of this too is, is fairness and equity to those being evaluated in the teacher because they need to understand those expectations too.
Understood.
So if we're all on the same page, then there's, I want to leave very, very little to doubt and I think that's why the lengthiness of this.
Got it, and I, and I understand, I guess where I was going with it is not the non-renewal of the employee. If this is not followed by administration, what are the consequences? Not for the teacher, but for administration and can we use this as something to hold administration accountable?
Well, it would be because this is, I mean, it's basically saying that once, and, and if we read through it and we train on it and we read what they're thinking, if it doesn't align with what we're thinking, let's have a discussion right now. Because we're not in the middle of non-renewal season. That's why it's happening at this point. And, and if you think about it from any level of professionalism, if we're investing the time into it and then we get, and all of a sudden we're in a long extended meeting, yet none of the process has been followed, I just, apparently that will come up in our evaluation process.
I just want to flush that out.
In a reverse, in a reverse mechanism, right? I would make self.
And a couple clarifying points on that, you know, as we do work together on this, the board evaluates through our, our new process, through dates, Dr. Sample as our superintendent. So directly, as this is put together in collaborative effort and Eddie's done a lot of work and so as the cabinet are all teamed with some input from the board through committee work, it is a, a fluid document and process. However, we do hold Dr. Sample to that standard and that's, that's where we start, we do work at committees for the collaboration. The other side, we talk about how we do look at our finances as far as what we're doing and not having, not have that particular theory. As one of the labeled or documented notes in the book, but you do talk about when you are spending time on something and making sure there's value, no different than return on investment for students. So making sure that all the work and time is done in the proper expected fashion. So I think it's a, a great effort here to put that all together. Thanks to Dr. Sample and Eddie and team for, for putting together this initial draft for us to continue to work on. And I encourage everyone to continue to go through that and ask questions as we go forward.
One, one last point of interest, this is, this is an open meeting right now. This document is available for everybody in the entire city to view, to read and hold everybody accountable to. So this is laying down the groundwork that when you're at the point where you have to make a decision, someone can't say, well, we didn't know that this was going, this is how it happens. It's a multi-page document that's in an open session meeting, you can access it anytime you like and it will be shared with everybody who's under contract as how things operate when contracting rules season comes.
Linda?
With the non-renewal process, I guess to me it's not just only teachers that go through that or if there's a situation, I mean, just saying administration or whomever it may be, there's always a non-renewal process for whomever is in this district. And so I don't know if this is just, should be just strictly for full-time teachers only. Because we don't just employ the teachers. So I don't know if there's something else besides.
Or our support staff or at-will employees.
Well, I, I mean, I'm saying in general, I mean.
Yeah.
And then also, I mean, you can follow this to a T that depending on whatever situation we may come upon, will also depend on how everything's handled or how everybody decides to make their vote as well.
Yeah, to my understanding is this non-renewal applies to contractual employees. And so that just by default would sit to the teachers and to the administration and then the non-contracted employees would be governed by handbook and is subject to continued employment or not continued employment. And I, I agree, the, the whole process still takes place, at least from what I understand, but this makes the process transparent and also the expectations right from this beginning point forward.
May I just know, I mean, so we do have the non-renewal process for administrators or whomever, if it's something that to maybe branch off of something maybe along this line is that? And I don't know if that would be something as a board. Because, I mean, or for yourself, I'm, I'm certain circumstances, I'm just saying, putting out there, not saying that this has happened, but if you chose to non-renew a principal or, or somebody along those lines, it might not be a bad idea to maybe have some type of a structure like that as well, I'm not sure.
And, and the same applies, the same steps apply, the same philosophy applies. It's, it's probably easier for you to non-renew me, you've got my evaluation as an example. You know, the same process would apply, we're not going to hold administrators and say, okay, you're, you're given this much flexibility, yet our professional teaching staff is given this much. It's, it's the same philosophy really does apply, it's just you cannot apply this to every, every employee in the industry because of the levels.
I don't understand what you're saying at this point, I didn't understand it really, because the blue, the blue, the blue title says full-time teachers only.
As opposed to absent employees.
Can it say contracted employees only? I mean, you wouldn't have two different standards for.
Well, Eddie.
Sorry.
Eddie's got his workout tonight.
Right, I didn't follow that.
Right.
Okay, so, and I'm just, I'm listening to what you all have to say as you talk about this. I appreciate everybody reading it, it sounds like a number of you definitely looked at it and whatnot and I apologize for the color, it's burning up your retina, but it's helping me keep track of things with some of the conversations that you have with the attorney and things like that around what's changing, what's in flux, what needs to maybe be clarified and so on and so forth. But the three are, who it pertains to, first off, your, your, you can put anybody's name in theory in terms of categories. I'll tell you that your, the way your administrative folks are going to deal with is a little bit different, the contract lengths are different and they have just cause clauses in them. So the way you're going to go about a non-renewal in that situation is going to involve like potentially a hearing officer and some other things that aren't necessarily, they could happen in a teacher process, but in an administrative process, they're probably going to be more along the lines of required. So although the philosophy that you guys are talking about can be very, very similar, the actual process itself might look significantly different. At the same time, when Dr. Sample's talking about support staff, they're technically at-will. And it's funny because we toss that term around a lot and I hear people say it, but at the same time, I think for a lot of reasons, whether there's protected classes or just in general, the expectations that people have of their supervisors and the kind of climate you want to create in the workplace, you don't just want to say, yeah, we can get rid of you for no reason. You want to have those reasons, that justification, you don't want surprises. So when you look at this and I, and I listen to you guys talk about a process, it's a set of tools is what I'm thinking of it more as. It's not necessarily the case that you always do this, then this, then this, then this. It's a, okay, here are these tools, depending on what's happening, depending on how minor or insignificant versus major or very significant it is, you might use a different tool to address that issue. Certain issues are going to accelerate you through the process faster, it depends what's going on. The tools that are in there towards the end, the different communication tools is kind of what I've come into calling, they are again dependent on the need. So I think we can branch them out into the future to the different types of names that you're talking about. I think it's a good, the teachers are a really good starting place because they're the largest employee group, there is some legal language around it, but there's also a cultural piece around it, about how we want to treat our staff and, and what kind of relationship we want to build with the staff throughout the district. So I would encourage us to go through this, reflect, see how it goes, and then kind of get that into the other employee groups as well.
John, a follow-up question.
Did I hear the number one reason we want to apply this to an administrative team is because they already require just. because they already require just cause, and therefore if you don't have causes documented, you would already be out of deficit. So the, the teachers do not require just cause. So it's that, it's that differentiation that.
There, there's some layers, and the word, the word cause by itself is different from just cause, which, and again, the teachers have a little bit of a different standard in and of itself. And I, I think as we get really deep in that conversation, that would be a good opportunity for us to have a, either a call-in or a visit with the attorney for some of those really in-depth questions and situations that you guys may want to, you know, really dive into really deep. Because all those words, even though not that seemingly different on the surface, has significant legal implications in terms of how they're written in contracts and what's required. Ironically though, the, the just cause standard is the, the culture building standard in the district, if that makes sense. You want to have a reason for, first, you recognize a problem here, supervisor. Hopefully you naturally want to help those who need help. You want to get them better, you want to get them to where, you know, the board expects them to be, to where the administration expects them to be, to where the, all the rubrics for educator effectiveness expect them to be. That's the, that's the, starting with positive intent portion. And then as you progress through some of those tools, and you're not seeing those improvements, those, those things that are going to help us get better outcomes for kids, that's when you start to get into that place where you start to document, it gets a little bit more uncomfortable and challenging, quite frankly, but.
Until in November, we can be confident this has been vetted for full-time teachers. We won't want to add the administrative topic on there because we will be adopting or voting on something in November that would be just contracted teacher-specific, right?
Yes, that's our thing with, with committee and then November board meetings.
And I, and I think too, like, like Dr. Sample said, so there's going to be a video out there, so you can check out the video. I'm coming into that, when we talk about it, when you, from what I understand, you've had this philosophy discussion around expulsion, so we're going to do something similar. I'm coming into it with, okay, here's what I've created, here's kind of a starting point. If our discussion leads us in some different directions and we need to make some changes, I'm totally planning to come out that night, make those changes, make sure that they're going to be in compliance with whatever pieces of the law that we have to follow. And then quote-unquote, "marilize" it. Do you want it to be something that you own, not something we just got from somebody else and implement? I want to make sure it's quote-unquote, "ours." That'll have the most meaning, it'll be the most staff. Do you guys, the admin, have a works?
Just only one point out, I share a statement and something to point out. I guess what I like most about this, and I recall this, you wanted before, maybe I can't remember, I like the color coding, first of all. And secondly, is, like John mentioned, this is going to be, this is an open meeting, so this is going to be out for everybody to see. Everybody in this room tonight, the general public, most of all, most of all our staff and our educators. And like about that, it's easy digestible, where the average person can sit down and read this and completely get the point of it, completely understand, at least as far as I'm concerned, I understand each and every line. But there's nothing that really makes, really scratch your head reading this. And so it's going to be easier for like John Q. Citizen, who has no previous knowledge of nonrenewal at all, to be able to read this and get a rough understanding of what you're getting at in the guidelines of the process. Secondly, I did notice one thing, at two points, maybe there's more. I, I noticed you use the terms "maril" instead of "maps." Maybe maps might be a better idea, make it more uniform.
Yeah, I will make sure that I try to unify the, the maps, the maril, and get, get one thing going through there.
Just a thought.
Yep.
And while we're talking about personnel, obviously, you know, and we're in open session, also as a reminder too, everybody with the exception of the board is evaluated in this district, and we lean very heavily on that process. And I shared a little bit about the goal conferences I have with those that are on evaluating. So we still lean very, very hard on that. While the color coding and some of the additions were not there in, in past history, there, there's, there is such a thing as, as improvement plans for administrators, okay? And that, and that does happen. So this is not a standalone document. It is accompanied by evaluations, observations, working alongside of people as we do, and as well as the, the culture that we try to create and the expectations we, we, we all share. So there shouldn't be no surprises. This is just one more document to say, let's not have any surprises. This is it, this is a philosophy, let's massage it, make sure it's all something we can move.
And to Jeremy's comment, I think everybody will be more comfortable operating with a philosophy than with a sort of legal jargon that only a relative number of people understand. I think a philosophy more longer is the staff, in terms of understanding, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions that you can do with this? I encourage everyone to kind of step away from this for a day or two, then come back and re-read it. I think a lot of times when we go through that process, we have an opportunity to catch maybe a different color section, some more words, or something will catch your eye the second time, now that we go through those guidelines and that draft. And maybe we can get the feedback through committees or directly to Dr. Sample or Eddie continuing down that process. So I'm making that the best document that we can have. Next item on our agenda is the approval of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one Merrill Adult Diploma Academy NADA contract revisions. Attached in our pack, it was a revised contract provided by Mr. Murray. So everyone is aware, DPI or Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction has made some requirements that we update some language, so that's why it is here with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion to see? Maria?
I approve the revised twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one Merrill Adult Diploma Academy contract.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. So we have a motion by Maria, second by Paul. Do we have any questions or discussions on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda, technical corrections made to the Head Start policy addendum regarding MAPS suspensions, pre-expulsions, and expulsions policy. Just so everyone is reminded for our bylaws, zero one thirty-one point three, our superintendent is authorized to review and make technical corrections to policies that have already been adopted through normal procedures. Anything you'd like to highlight there, Dr. Sample? I think it was pretty well explained, but otherwise I'll turn it over to questions from the board.
Okay. I think it's all there.
John?
I realize it's just a number revision, but it prompted a question because it's the first time I've read this addendum. It says MAPS Head Start will not expel a student from school. Is that the MAPS Head Start Policy Council? Or is it saying the MAPS Board of Education will not expel pre-K children? Like who's the, looking for who the actual actionable.
We aren't allowed to, you, who really can't, by Head Start standards, expel a child for their behaviors. And on the other, we're supposed to teach them how to behave. Where that's our job to teach.
Agreed, hundred percent. But which body is this referring to? So it says MAPS Head Start will not expel a student from school. And I'm just kind of saying, the Board of Education expels students. So are we asking that the?
It would go through policy level. Yeah, like anything, when we, anytime we would let a student go, it would be mainly because of attendance, in which we've covered.
So if you were allowed to expel, is it the Policy Council that would expel, or would it be the MAPS Board that would expel?
Or the school.
What?
Or it would be the school.
It's almost where you're.
We cannot expel a student.
Right.
So it's basically saying, stating that we would not. That's what that is. The only reason it's on there is because of the adverb, being linked to a policy.
The number change.
The number change that occurred in the news.
Are you looking for, does that change the wording, John? The captain has taken.
Is that what you're looking at?
Basically saying that MAPS Head Start can't expel students no matter what, because you don't have the authority. So basically, the policy seemingly should be, the Merrill Area Public School District's Board of Education will not consider the expulsion of, of pre-K student from, you know, something in that regards, because right now the sentence is just kind of like MAPS Head Start, which that's just the building or the program they went to expel anyway.
Or even you could just make it even simpler or shorter, just take out MAPS and just simply state Head Start students will, will not be expelled, cannot be expelled. Leave, leave that there. You know, as I mentioned, MAPS.
Might work.
That would make sense too.
Right.
But the whole idea is.
Like, I'm not interested, I'm not interested in expelling Head Start, Head Start students. I just want the policy to make the, to make the actual entity that is allowed to expel prohibited from doing it, which would be, so.
As the governing board, you would make that decision if you were to do that. So however you'd like to word it is.
I guess my next question is, is the state Head Start and federal Head Start going to be okay with the wording change?
Absolutely.
Okay, because sometimes they get a little weird about that. They get a little weird, because they always want to show that relationship between us and you guys.
And this board is the governing board, so.
It's actually a technical correction.
Yeah.
Right, yes. So that's okay. That would be fine with me.
So we'll change the attachment to reflect that as well.
All right, thank you. Thank you, John. That was an update, and thank, thank you for that, Joe and Dr. Sample, just to go through that technical corrections and a few more ideas going forward. Next item on our agenda is the wrestling booster club donation. We did have, provided the donation form and information from Dale Bergman regarding the donation of two wrestling mats from the Booster Club. Based on our policy seventy-two thirty, being that the donation is over our twenty-five-hundred-dollar limit, we do need that board to vote on that approval. Do we have that motion this evening? Paul?
I move to recommend the motion, recommend a motion to approve the donation of touchpads. Oh, I'm in the wrong one, I'm sorry. Recommend a motion to approve the donation of two wrestling mats from the Wrestling Booster Club, valued at nine thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the Merrill Wrestling Program.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jeremy, any discussion, questions on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the Merrill Aqua Jays donation, and that information was provided also by Dale Bergman regarding ads from the Merrill Aqua Jays. Once again, based on our policy seventy-two thirty, our limit is twenty-five-hundred dollars, since it is more than that. Do we have a recommended motion in front of us this evening? Do we have that motion? John?
Recommend a motion to approve the donation of touchpads from the Merrill Aqua Jays valued at five thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars for the timing system for the swim team meets.
Motion by John, a second. We have a second by Linda. Any question or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Before we get to our next topic, which is the consent agenda, would anyone like anything pulled from said consent agenda? If not, I would look for a motion. John?
Motion to approve consent agenda items, consent agenda items A through E, which includes the second readings and approval of policy eighty-six sixty, transportation by private vehicle. The minutes is September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, October nine, two thousand nineteen, and October sixteenth, two thousand nineteen meetings. Claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling three million seven hundred and seventy thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. The personnel report, which includes the hirings of Brett Byer, district maintenance specialist, effective October seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. The resignation of Deborah Bloom, effective October twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. The following, in limited terms, seasonal or grant employees. Richard Linder-Burbach, Merrill's senior high school spring play director. Musical director. Timothy English, PRMS football coach. Todd Noslinger, PRMS head soccer coach. Zachary Hayne, MHS assistant coach. Matthew Leidwick, Washington after-school program. Nate Reevee, MHS assistant JV basketball coach. Josh Klue, PRMS assistant intramural football coach. Catherine Zamanda, ball play production manager. Madison Schultz, Jefferson after-school program. And Tim Mo, MHS play director. And the donations totaling thirty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Second.
Motion by John, a second by Maria. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Maria?
Stay from the October sixteen minutes, please.
I am staying from October sixteen, please.
Motion carries, would be noted, abstentions. Next on our agenda is items for future meetings and any possible future discussions, either to be taken to committee or addressed as a board at the board, future board meetings. Does anyone have any discussion items that they would like to bring up at this time?
I just have a question. Can we kind of get a formal process of how you want these all handled? Because I took something to our committee and asked for it to be brought to our committee, but then now we're being told we have to bring it back to the full board, ask for permission so they can vote on it, and then it comes back down to committee. So I guess, what would you like the new process to be, is to bring it here, have everybody vote on it, then it goes back down to committee? Or why can't we just ask for the topic to be done at that committee? Because I brought a couple items to the committee, but then it was like, did you want us to vote on it at board to be brought? Or I guess, maybe the understanding of that process and how you'd like things to be done?
And I'm not sure specifically what, what items or which committee, Linda, but in general.
Well, so CTP, I was on a committee, and I asked for a couple things, like the driver's ed program and like the district sports communications and, and participants in the sporting events that we have, or sports that we have. I asked that at the CTP committee, but then I was asked of Maria if we should have it brought to the full board to be voted on and to be brought back.
So, so the suggestions for future meetings, should that be, that discussion be held at the committee level as well as the board level, if it's brought up at the committee level?
I think we were trying to specify, I mean, the bylaw for the single unit control, I think is where we were going. And I think the committee could be an option, depending on what you guys agree to. The board will direct the superintendent only through official decisions of the board. However, and it says the board will make decisions by formal recorded vote in order to avoid any ambiguity, whether direction is being given. The superintendent is neither obligated nor expected to follow the directions or instructions of individual board members, officers, or committees unless the board has specifically delegated such exercise of authority, which we could do. And then should the superintendent determine that an information request received from an individual member committee is unreasonable and requires a material amount of staff time, superintendent's expected to ask the committee or member to refer such requests to the full board. So I think it's almost what you want to delegate, what does the board want to delegate?
Sure, and Jeremy, if you have a thought before I expand on answering your question.
Yeah, just a thought is, I'm not in any committees, but most, every committee agenda I look at is pretty busy. And to me, that'd be a big, because a lot of these items we ask for future board meetings, it's all information that's already been discussed, looking for clarification, looking for an update. So to send something back to the committee that they probably have already talked about at some point, only to send it back to the board, seems like, A, a wasted time to me, and a wasted space of committee agenda, given they're already busy, agenda's the way it is. To me, it just makes more sense that this board is deciding, we want more information on something, that should be brought back to the board. Let the board get what information they're looking for, and we can move on to the next item.
And, and I understand what you're saying, and I guess the clarifying point that I hear Linda asking is, so where, where should we start? Do we start here, or do we start at the committee? And in, in my eyes, there is a little bit of the chicken and the egg philosophy there. And the clarifying question to me is, where did, where did the topic start? And when we have agendas for this evening, I do work with Dr. Sample, and we do look at timeliness of things, and we do have a calendar for the year to understand what our priorities are. If that's budget-related, if it's employment or contract-related, if it's policy-related, we try to break that down in information that we can take on a monthly basis without spending four, five, six hours of the public's time and having them hear or watch the video to understand what's going on. So really, the answer is, it depends. And if you were at a meeting and you want clarification of something, and it is a subtopic of that, and it can be added to that next month's agenda for that committee, and it's not going to hold things up, otherwise you could ask as a committee or a member of that committee to bring that data, or whichever director or Dr. Sample is presenting that for the full board, because we're trying to do is have all the answers to all the questions that people have in order that we can make an educated motion and vote in the future for the best of the district. So with that being said, we try to add this here, and one of our thoughts, and at one time I opened this up for a vote from each other to say, hey, is that worthy to be on there at a committee or at tonight's meeting? And we do go to what Jeremy is saying. We do need to prioritize things. We need to make sure, are we going to get done in the amount of time a committee has allocated, that we're not missing the core topics that affect our district and our student learning and achievement. So if you're thinking of it that evening, by all means, mention that. You can talk to the chair of that particular committee. If it is too late for that meeting, you can email me directly. I can work with the chair of any committee, or we can talk directly to Dr. Sample to put that all together. We're not trying to make this more difficult. The other reason we put this on there, in the past, the question had come up, not only for transparency, but for clarification and accountability, that if we have a list and someone said, well, I was asking a question on the science department or the fab lab, or the drone club, or the Spanish class, or their trip, how come we never heard of that? Or was it in a report and somebody forgot? It's the accountability piece, and that was where this was coming into play, as I saw that. And we kept attached a running list and a spreadsheet so Dr. Sample and the board president could make sure that we are prioritizing those, bringing them to the committees and to the board at the proper timeframe. But I don't know that I answered that. Jeremy's hand up and then John's, so Jeremy?
Yeah, and I, not to make a mountain of a motive here, but I have, I just have concerns with this. I'm not sure if there's a policy regarding this, or how to go about this. I just have concerns about anything on the future, you know, board of business going back to committee. Because, for instance, in the event, like, say myself, for instance, that, say that John has a question about J Stadium, but John's on Facilities Committee, and just so happens that the day that meeting comes up, well, that's going to be discussed, because it'll set back to committee, John for some reason can't make that committee. If that committee decides to not send it back to the board to just hand the information there, then John never gets his concern addressed. So to me, it just makes more sense just for this list, just to have it come back to the board where the issue was raised in the first place.
I think I can speak to that.
You can, then I can summarize that. Yeah, go ahead, John.
The reason I think this all came into play is because at this point in the meeting, people have asked for information that some people in committee have talked about for months. And we've already had it in our packets and in the minutes, and whether it's a policy they want explained, or whether it's, I mean, we have a process for hiring coaches. I know that was discussed at length at Human Resources, and maybe it was in two thousand eighteen, and there's a document out there. So a lot of times, these are just questions people have. They're not necessarily committee agenda items or board agenda items.
Exactly.
And so what happens is when they're asked, and here, we're stuck in a hard place, like, I'd like to see this on a future agenda. Well, actually, what we'd like is an answer to your question, and that might just be as simple as Dr. Sample sending you an email that was something, I mean, I, there's so much stuff, don't get me wrong, you can't remember everything that was discussed, but they can pull that back up. So I think what we're trying to do is prevent questions from making committee members engage in the whole process all over again. So I want to discuss this. Well, I know you want to discuss this, but some other people have no interest whatsoever. And so that's really what I think the goal of this discussion at this point in the agenda was, is because my individual concern might not be anyone's concern here, and why should I be able to get the administration working twenty hours extra next week and the committees working...
Right.
Assuming forty minutes of their time because of one person has a question, I think that was the overall intent. So I...
I agree. That's why we vote on these before we put them on the list. And that's my point exactly, is why burden committees with this, is something discussed already, is bring it back, put on the agenda, information only on the agenda, here's the answer to your question, move on.
Yeah.
And I think when answering Linda's question, that was part of the it depends answer is, what is the historical data on the topic? Was it a, maybe you were not on the board yet at the time that it was discussed, and we could use a refresher for everybody's mindset on that topic? And we don't need any committee review, and we will bring that forward accordingly. If there is something, perhaps a policy revision, and maybe we do have a place for that, or if it's a facilities or HR finance topic, maybe it does need a little more work than just an update here. So we do take those on a case-by-case basis.
I think just really out of respect for each other, that if we have an agenda item that we're interested in, we can start by sending it to Kevin. Kevin sends it to Dr. Sample. Dr. Sample sends us an email with a PDF attached from two thousand eighteen that has everything you asked for. And if that doesn't happen, then it can become an agenda item, because there's no document to grab, and the discussion hasn't taken place. Because we, for a while, they're on agenda items, repeating discussions here that...
So just take the section off the agenda altogether, and just do it via email?
I think it's a great idea to start with your chair, see if there's an answer already floating out there in the district, get your answer, and if there's no answer, then the chair can recognize that, oh, boy, that's a valid point. I asked John for an answer, there is none in the whole district, let's make it an agenda item.
Yeah, well, probably then, in short meetings possibly. Your five minutes.
I know we brought this up because I just wanted to know, because we really never truly had a process on how all of this works and how it comes to be. And that was another reason why that unfinished future meetings list has started, was because we would request things not knowing where they belong, or who, you know, and okay, can I just go directly to Mr. Sample? So it's like, hey, can I have that information? Or Kevin, can I have that? You know, and it's like, you don't want to think that you're trying to, you know, go behind somebody's back and say, oh, let's do a mess, you know? So I guess it would be just nice to have a full process that we can all agree on. And, you know, I think that's a good idea, starting with the email thing. It's just not knowing where to start.
And you could take away the policy that is in place right now. One point of contact, Dr. Sample talks to Kevin Blake. And so we talk to Kevin Blake. And so when we have questions, or we have agenda items, we take them to Kevin Blake. Kevin Blake decides whether or not he's going to answer it, or whether he's going to roll it up to his one point of contact. And if we do that, it'll be super efficient, because you'll get your answer. And then if you get your answer and you're like, this doesn't make any sense, and I think this is crazy, well, get it on, talk to the chairman and see if he agrees, and then we can discuss it.
So maybe an idea for future agenda item is to eliminate the future agenda items.
Or we all just be quiet.
And that is fine. I will take up. Any and all questions, concerns can be emailed to me, that will be fine, and I will work with Tammy on removing this section. But while we come to close this particular section, I did see Paul's hand up, so I'm going to give him his moment to discuss a brief note if he'd like to.
No, I have only one thing. We could excuse our students. We're running kind of late, and they have class tomorrow, probably homework tonight. And no reason to keep them here this long.
Actually, if we looked at the school calendar, they're...
You're off.
Two days off. So keep them here until after full session.
Oh, you can wait until next...
I tried to help. Why don't you turn to that table? But you are...
Yeah, I got school. I go home.
Yeah, we have a special meeting.
You could have split second, you could have made it up.
She didn't take advantage of that, but it was a noble cause and thought, and we do appreciate them sticking through the meeting to learn the process and all the topics that we cover on the agenda, so thank you guys for doing that.
I don't want to beat a dead horse. I just want to clarify, the question that Linda asked initially did not come out of a board meeting asking what can go on a future agenda item. It came out of Linda asking at the CTP committee to put items on the CTP agenda, which would completely, in theory, bypass the board. And that's where, I mean, I'm not saying to get you wrong, we were just trying to clear out what we should do, and I said we should come back here and figure out how we handle those committee requests as well, but it could be handled in the same way, instead of, for instance, the CTP committee saying, Karen Baker, go find out these twelve things for me before the next CTP committee meeting, which would be...
Yeah, exactly. That sounds...
Just saying. So I like this solution, so just clarifying that that's...
In committee, couldn't it be Kevin contacting committee chair?
Sure.
Always?
Absolutely.
So like, if you have something that you want in your committee to be addressed in committee, instead of going to Dr. Sample, it would involve the committee chair, Dr. Sample, and then, because you're setting the agenda, literally?
Absolutely. A great addition to that, if something does come up there, or if there's any questions the other side of that, not only the transparency, but it is, like I said, accountability, so there's nothing falling through or missed. And if someone has a question, to bring it up either to the chair of that committee, to then bring it up to myself as the school board president or chairman, and then we will get it on the appropriate agenda. I'll work with Dr. Sample, her policy, to have it on an agenda if and when appropriate, and prioritize it accordingly. So we will do that, and I will work with Tammy and our board clerk on the future agendas, just to keep a running list of Dr. Sample, but not to have that agenda item. Thanks, everyone, for their input on that and clarification. Please note on our packet, we always go through our board decision financial impact summary as well, and there's an attached document there. We've done that for some time, just to have that reminder of everything that is done that does affect our district and the budget. Another thing there is a reminder that tomorrow morning at eight fifteen AM, if you have nothing better to do, please listen to the scheduled radio broadcast on Blue Jay seven-thirty as Dr. Sample and I will be on highlighting tonight's meeting. Some future meetings to note will be the Facilities Committee meeting, which is located in the boardroom on Wednesday, November sixth, starting at three thirty PM, followed directly by the Finance Human Resources Committee meeting at four thirty, which was as stated Wednesday, November sixth, here in the boardroom. Maple Grove Governance Board meeting will be on Monday, November eleventh, at six thirty PM, audit Maple Grove Charter School. Pine River School for Young Learners Policy Governance Board meeting will be held next at Tuesday, November twelfth, at five thirty PM, audit the Pine River School for Young Learners. The CTP, Curriculum Technology Pupil Services, next committee meeting will be on Wednesday, November thirteenth, at four thirty PM here in the boardroom. Bridges Virtual Academy Governance Board meeting is Thursday, November fourteenth, one forty-five PM in the Bridges Virtual Academy or Virtual Meeting Room. On its regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November twentieth, at five thirty PM here in the boardroom. Next, we have a contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section nineteen point eight-five, current one, current C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data, ready, public employee which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, current F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where current B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to in such history of their data or involved in such problems or investigations, in one eighteen point one-two-five, for the purpose of considering student early college credit and start now applications that may involve discussions of confidential student records and to discuss other matters involving student records and personal histories that if discussed in public would likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputations of a person's discuss. The purpose of the closed session is for consideration of and possible action regarding applications for participation in the early college credit and start college now programs, and consideration of and possible action regarding two professional and home support staff members' requests for leave of absence. Do we have that motion this evening? So motion by Maria, a second by Paul. Do we have a roll call on that, please, Tammy?
Maria Lothe, Delinda Yingling. Aye. Nuts Ashburn.
Aye.
Paul Crew.
Aye.
Jeremy Ratliff.
Aye.
John Smith.
Aye.
Kristy Stellingward.
Aye.
Kevin Blake.
Aye. We will take it now seven fifty-seven. We will take a five-minute recess, and we will convene into closed session. Thanks, everyone, for your attendance this evening.